I'd like to call this meeting of the November 26, 2018 legislative session of the Salisbury City Council to order. I would ask everyone to please silence any electronic devices that you might have. If you need to make a phone call, we ask that you leave the chamber and make it in the hallway. If, for some reason during the meeting, an emergency should arise, please exit in a calm manner, make a right-hand turn and go down the stairs. If that exit, for some reason, is blocked, please make a left-hand turn, then a right, and go down the stairs. Please do not use the elevators in case of an emergency. If you need assistance, please ask, and we will be provided to you. Please, again as a reminder, do not use the elevator. At this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence. Last week, we lost a fine police officer, a great man, and a friend. I'd like to have a moment of silence, please, for Officer Aaron Bull Hudson. At this time, I'd call on Pastor Clarence Folk of the United Unity Christian Fellowship of Salisbury for our invocation, please.
Let us pray. Father in our God, how great is thy name in all the earth! You alone are God, and there is no other. We recognize that we are here tonight, not because of any goodness of our own, but because of your mercy, your grace, and your never-ending love. We humbly assemble ourselves tonight, in your presence, in your name, and for your sake. Help us to do those things that are pleasing in your sight, that we might enhance the lives of the citizens of this city. We pray for those in our community who are less fortunate than we are. Create in us the mind and the heart to provide for the hungry and the homeless, the sick and the infirm. We pray for those behind prison walls, that they might come to know your love and become fruitful, productive members of our community. Bless the mayor and all of the council members as they deliberate the circumstances and issues facing this community. Help them to act with brotherly and sisterly love, and always without a contentious spirit. Moreover, where and when they cannot agree, help them to recognize the right of the majority to govern. But not only this, bless every person and family in this community, this city, this county, this state, and this nation. And we will continue to give you all the glory, honor, and praise. In your name and for your glory, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Folk. Please rise now and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Rudisil, Mr. Boda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Seconded.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Rudisil. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
On the consent agenda, tonight, we have the November 5, 2018 Work Session Minutes, Resolution Number 2884, approving the appointment of Tom Truitt to the Friends of Poplar Hill Board of Directors for term ending November 2021. Resolution Number 2885, approving the appointment of Lynn Cathcart to the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals for term ending November 2022. And that's it.
Any questions or comments? If not, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Can we acknowledge Mr. Truitt?
Yes.
Ms. Cathcart?
Yes, I was going to do that.
Sorry.
Sorry. Mr. Truitt is here, is Ms. Cathcart, I don't see Lynn. Lynn's not here. Would you please stand, please, and thank you very much for volunteering. We appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Seconded.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Good evening, Mrs. Miller.
Good evening. Okay, the first item this evening is change order number 10 to Contract 107-15. The City of Salisbury Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to review and process change order number 10 for Contract 107-15. That's the wastewater treatment plant, BNR-ENR upgrade. This change order totaled at $155,791.26, addresses 13 miscellaneous proposed change orders. A synopsis of the work specified in change order number 10 is included in the attached departmental memo. These change orders have been thoroughly vetted by the city's construction administrator, GHD Incorporated, and by city staff. Funding is available in the accounts noted in your packet. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to process change order number 10, as noted above, to Ullman Schutey Construction, LLC, in the amount of $155,791.26. Upon council's approval, the Department of Infrastructure and Development will present the change order to the Maryland Department of the Environment for approval.
Any questions or comments? Okay.
Thank you. The next item this evening is a request for a declaration of surplus. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Salisbury Fire Department to declare 23 pieces of turnout gear, including eight coats and 15 pairs of pants, as surplus, in addition to 12 Class III rescue harnesses. These items have surpassed their useful life and must be disposed of in accordance with the National Fire Protection Association Codes 1851 and 1858, so they are not utilized for further service. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to declare the noted items surplus and to allow the City of Salisbury Fire Department to destroy the gear.
Questions or comments? This is part of our normal rotation, right? Okay. All right, hearing no questions, I'll call for a motion, I'll call for a vote on the award of bids. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2509 for the second reading.
So moved. Seconded.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Good evening, Mr. Tillman.
Good evening. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Department of Justice for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $433,469, authorizing the mayor to enter into a sub-recipient agreement with Wycomico County Circuit Court, and approving an amendment to the FY 2019 grant fund budget to appropriate funds to enhance the Wycomico County Adult Drug Treatment Court. Whereas the City of Salisbury, in conjunction with the Circuit Court of Wycomico County, for funds, applied for funds through the U.S. Department of Justice, DOJ Drug Court Discretionary Grant Program, and whereas the DOJ was awarded the city fund, has awarded the city funds in the amount of $433,469, and whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a grant agreement with the DOJ defining how these funds must be expended, and whereas the city is sub-granting $359,019 to the Circuit Court of Wycomico County, and whereas all funds shall be used to enhance the Wycomico County Adult Drug Treatment Court through law enforcement visits, rental vouchers, random call-in software, and others. And whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the Circuit Court of Wycomico County defining how these funds must be expended, and whereas the city is retaining $84,450 for the Salisbury Police Department overtime costs, housing first rental vouchers, and indirect program costs, and whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the mayor from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council, and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council, the City of Salisbury now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, that the City of Salisbury hereby authorizes Mayor Jacob R. Day to enter into an agreement with the Department of Justice for assistance, for acceptance of these funds, be it further ordained that the council, the City of Salisbury, hereby authorizes Mayor Day to negotiate and enter into sub-recipient grant agreement with the Circuit Court for Wycomico County, and be it further ordained that the city's fiscal year 2019 grant fund budget be and is hereby amended with increase adult drug court revenue account by $433,469, increase non-clerical overtime expense account by $23,155, increase the transfer to housing first expense account by $51,264, and increase the operating expense account by $10,031, and increase the sub-recipient, excuse me, Wycomico Circuit Court expense account by $359,019. That's it.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2509 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2510 for the second reading.
So moved. Seconded.
Mr. Rudisil, who is the second? Ms. Jackson? Ms. Jackson? We'll give it to you this time. All right.
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Department of Natural Resources for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $120,500, and approving an amendment to the FY 2019 grant fund budget to appropriate funds for improving Waterside Park through a new playing field, playground, signage, parking lot, and stormwater improvements. Whereas pursuant to Resolution 2766, the City of Salisbury applied for funds through the Maryland Department of Natural Resources Community Parks and Playgrounds Program, and whereas DNR has awarded the city funds in the amount of $120,500, and whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a grant agreement with DNR defining how these funds must be expended, and whereas all funds shall be used to improve Waterside Park for Salisbury's West Side neighborhood, and whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter forbids the mayor from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council, and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council, the City of Salisbury now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, that the City of Salisbury hereby authorizes Mayor Jacob R. Day to enter into a grant agreement with the Department of Natural Resources for acceptancy of these funds, and be it further ordained that the city's fiscal year 2018 general fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows: Increase Community Parks and Playgrounds Grants Revenue Account by $120,500; Increase in the Community Parks and Playgrounds Construction Expense Account by an equivalent amount.
Questions or comments? The only comment I have is that this is great news, and it's going to make a significant difference in that, in that playground. We're looking forward to it. And thank you, Nancy, for all your work. Appreciate it. There are no other comments, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2510 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2511 for the second reading.
So moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Tillman.
It's an ordinance of the council, the City of Salisbury, for renaming a portion of North Division Street to Knockway, whereas the Salisbury Charter, SC 11-2, gives the city charge of all public ways in the city, and whereas the northernmost section of North Division Street lies between Decatur Avenue and Priscilla Street, extending 360 feet, and is completely disconnected from other parts of North Division Street by approximately 3,000 feet at the closest point, and whereas the city transferred intervening right-of-way to the State Highway Administration in the 1930s to build Route 13, and whereas the broken and segmented nature of North Division Street causes confusion amongst drivers navigating to businesses and to the 1955 war memorial on the isolated portion of North Division Street, and whereas the Knoc family has a long history of entrepreneurship and philanthropy in the Salisbury community, and Knoc Insurance is located on the isolated portion of North Division Street, and whereas the Knoc family owns two of the three private properties on the street, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development has determined there is no existing street, there are no existing street names in the City of Salisbury or Wycomico County that are the same as or similar to Knockway, and whereas there are three properties utilizing this segment as a street address, and the majority have all given their consent to the name change, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city hereby approves the remaining portion, renaming of the portion of North Division Street extending northerly from Decatur Avenue to Priscilla Street to Knockway. Be it further ordained that this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its final
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2511 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2512 for the second reading.
So moved.
Seconded.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to remove parking from Waverly Drive between Carroll Street and South Boulevard, whereas the Salisbury Charter, SC 11-2, gives the city charge of all public ways, and whereas ordinance number 2215 created, it's created a bike route along Waverly Drive, and whereas the City of Salisbury desires to encourage the use of bicycles throughout the city, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development proposes to rebuild the bike route along Waverly Drive to increase the safety of bicyclists, and whereas the rebuilt bike route on Waverly Drive from Carroll Street to South Boulevard will consist of a protected two-way cycle track on the east side of the street, as shown on Exhibit A, and whereas construction of the two-way cycle track will require the removal of two on-street parking spaces near the intersection with South Boulevard, and whereas a recommendation of the proposed parking elimination is attached as Exhibit B, now therefore be ordained by the City of Salisbury, that the city does hereby remove on-street parking on Waverly from Carroll to South Boulevard, and be it further enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury, that this ordinance shall take effect upon final passage.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2512 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2513 for the second reading.
So moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Irtin, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Department of Homeland Security for the purpose of accepting, excuse me, grant funds in the amount of $42,577, and approving a budget amendment of the grant fund to appropriate funds for the purpose of enhanced Marine Drive. Thank you. Thank you very much.
He caught it, he caught it from me last.
Or he's not going to charge us for that. Is that what it is? While we wait?
It was a loud Thanksgiving at my house. Thank you very much. Okay, whereas the fire department has been offered a grand award in the amount of $42,577 from DHS as part of the Port Security Grant Program to be used for the purchase of enhanced Marine Drive operational equipment, and whereas the federal share of the project is $42,577, and the city's share of the project is $14,192, and whereas the city's share of the cost shall be funded and held by the city, by the Salisbury Fire Department Volunteer Corporation, and whereas the City of Salisbury must agree to the terms of the documents in the award package attached as Exhibit A, and whereas 7-29 forbids the expenditure of funds not authorized by the city council, and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purposes of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council, the City of Salisbury now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the council of the city does hereby authorize Mayor Jacob R. Day to enter into a grant agreement with the Department of Homeland Security for acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $42,577. City further accepts the contribution of $14,192 from the Salisbury Fire Department Volunteer Corporation. City expresses its sincere appreciation to the United States Department of Homeland Security, Port Security Grants Program administrators, Salisbury Fire Department, Inc., Station 16, and Salisbury Fire Company Number Two, Station Two, for their recognition of and contribution to the city's efforts to enhance the efficiency and effectiveness of the services provided by the Salisbury Fire Department to the citizens of Salisbury and the Salisbury Fire District. Be it further ordained that the city's fiscal year 2019 grant fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows: Increase Port Security Grant DHS Revenue Account by $42,577; Increase Port Security Grant City Match Revenue Account by $14,192; And Increase Port Security Grant Equipment Expense Account by $56,769.
Questions or comments? Chief, would you just take a couple of minutes, maybe, to tell everybody what our new capabilities
So the two projects in question that will be funded through this grant is, one, a side-scan sonar, which is towable behind marine vessels. So this will give us the capabilities, before we actually put divers in the water, to get a look at the topography of what's under the water. It'll also help give us a better idea of exactly where to look, because the capabilities of the side-scan sonar will allow us to see pictures underwater. So if we're looking for vehicles underwater, it'll identify a closer area of where that is, or if we're doing any type of search for any other item, it helps us locate it. And also allows the divers to see any obstructions that they could face, stumps, large debris that they're going to be swimming into, so we can mark those certain areas. The other project that this will fund is a FLIR system for the boat, which is a forward-looking infrared camera system. So it will enhance our nighttime operations to be able to see fall conditions, it will allow us to scan shorelines, so if people are missing and it's believed they're down by the waterways, we will be able to travel the waterways with that camera on and see heat detection to know whether or not there's someone down by the waterways, and also it will assist in police activities if we're looking for people that are, the police are looking for. So those are the two items that this grant will purchase for us.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2513 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2514 for the first reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtin. Was it, or is it, you throw your voice? I'm just. Mr. Tillman.
Thank you. An ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland Department of Planning for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $50,000, authorizing the mayor to enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District, Inc., and approving a budget amendment to the FY 2019 Grant Fund to appropriate funds for the 2018 National Folk Festival, whereas the Maryland Department of Planning, Planning's Maryland Heritage Area Authority has a non-capital grant program, and whereas the purpose of the program is to provide targeted financial and technical assistance within Maryland's heritage areas to support heritage tourism, and whereas the City of Salisbury is committed to hosting the 2018 through 2020 seasons of the National Folk Festival in order to celebrate our community's local heritage, culture, and art, and whereas the City of Salisbury submitted a grant application for funding to the MHAA Grant Program to support the 2018 National Folk Festival, and whereas the Maryland Department of Planning's MHAA has awarded the city funds in the amount of $50,000, and whereas all funds shall be used to fund necessary equipment and supplies for the Maryland's traditional folk-life area and the family area of the 2018 National Folk Festival, and whereas the City of Salisbury has designated the Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District, Inc. as its financial agency for the 2018 through 2020 National Folk Festivals, and whereas the City of Salisbury is sub-granting the award of $50,000 to the Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District, and whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District defining how these funds must be expended, and whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter forbids expenditures not appropriated for the general classification or expenditure, and forbids any office, department, or agency from expending funds not appropriated, and whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four-fifths of the council, the City of Salisbury now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, that the council, that the city hereby authorizes Mayor Jacob R. Day to enter into a grant agreement with the Maryland Department of Planning for acceptancy of these funds, and be it further ordered that the council, the City of Salisbury hereby authorizes the mayor to negotiate and enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District for the purpose of expending these funds, and be it further ordained that the city's fiscal 2019 grant fund budget is hereby amended as follows with an increase in FY 19 MHAA-NFF Grant Revenue Account by $50,000, and an increase in the sub-recipient Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District, Inc. account by an equivalent amount.
Questions or comments? Payback. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2514 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
We have any requests for public comments? We do have a couple of things coming up this week. Mr. Mayor, would you want to tell us a little bit about when I can skate?
Sure. So, beginning Saturday, December 1st, we will have an ice skating rink at the Riverwalk Camp Theater.
12 to? 12 to 4:30?
Ribbon cutting's at 12. So that'll be a ribbon cutting for the ice skating rink, which is larger than last year's. There'll be some, you know, accoutrement vendors and such around, but 12 on the first, and that'll be for four weekends for those hours for the month of December. Want to encourage everybody to come out, not only to support that, but also the naming of the amphitheater for Pohanka, who is going to be making a contribution. Obviously, that'll come before this body, before it's finalized, but they have made an offer. They've acquired the ice skating rink and want to donate that and another contribution to the city as well. In addition to that, we have, what else do we have going on this week?
JC's Christmas Parade.
The Christmas Parade, right?
Mm-hmm.
So the Christmas Parade, obviously a big deal. I'm sure everybody here is going to be there. And then, just a reminder to all of you, the City Holiday Party on Friday at the Civic Center. And then, something that I think the whole public would be interested in tomorrow, tomorrow, just to give you the details, were full services at 10:00 a.m. There will be a viewing. The viewing is in the Civic Center, in the Normandy Arena of the Civic Center. At noon, there will be the funeral services. So the funeral services in the Normandy Arena at the Civic Center. And at 1:45 after the services, if you want to make your way to the plaza, really anywhere on the plaza, just as a pedestrian, park on the Plaza, just as pedestrian, parking, there will be no parking, fees collected or enforcement for a couple of hours, so that people can get in and get out relatively easily. There will be some streets blocked off in order to allow the procession to move down Main Street onto the Plaza, but if you want to be there, it'll do the last call, which is the last call over the radio for Officer Hudson, for Master Police Officer Hudson. So again, that's 10:00 a.m. Norman D. Arena at the Civic Center for viewing, 10 to noon. Noon, funeral services, 1:45 on the Plaza for last call. So, encourage everyone to participate in whatever of that you can, and we hope that, you know, everybody will find their, their way of taking whatever they feel is appropriate tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Considering there's no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.